Good night, and thank you for all of those for the service you do. And on that note, I am going to call the City of Bowie Regular City Council Meeting of Monday, December the 2nd, 2024 in council chambers. It is now 8:02 to order. Would those who are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, could you confirm that we have a quorum this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a quorum this evening. Present in council chambers, we have Councilmember Steph, Councilmember Rogers, Mayor Pro-Tam Wolfley, Mayor Adams, Councilmember Brady, Councilmember Truesdale, and Councilmember Inde Boomado.
Hey, thank you so very much, City Clerk. At this time, I would like to move, as we get to Agenda Additions, Deletions, Agenda Additions, Deletions, and Amendments, that we move Item E due to some additional items we want to review, that we move that to the January 6th meeting. A second. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
A poll saying favor. Hearing none. Are there any other Agenda Additions, Deletions, or Amendments at this time? Councilman Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a new item for discussion, and it relates to the Redeemer Church application for their church and six homes. I'd like to have a discussion on tasking staff with action to try and get that delayed from tentatively this Thursday, the 5th, into January, February, and have them, if successful, have them do a report and bring it back for us to hold a public hearing and take a position on that application. So I'd like to add that for the discussion.
Second.
As a new item.
Okay, and you're adding that for a discussion. You'd like to put it for the January meeting?
No.
Today?
Right now, so we can task staff.
Okay.
It's just a discussion on tasking staff with an assignment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion, second. Anything? It's been moved and properly second, that we add the item for the discussion to our meeting today. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
A poll saying favor. Hearing none, motion carries. Are there any other Agenda Addition, Deletions, or Amendments? Hearing none, we will move on to citizen participation. The first one is Chuck Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, and thank you very much for this opportunity. I am here because I wanted to bring the city council, bring to your attention, an effort that has been going on for the past five years. Almost 10 years ago, Pam Williams and I co-authored a book, City of Bowie, a history book, book of essays and photos, chronicling the history of Bowie. During that project, I came upon the fact that there was a lot of missing data on the enslaved at Bel Air Mansion. The book itself was well-received, but there's a lot of holes in it. The enslaved at Bel Air Mansion and other topics, we couldn't include. Anyhow, for the past five years, five, four years, I've been working with Susan Proctor at Bowie Museums, chronicling and cataloguing the enslaved, the records there. We have enough material for a book. During the same time, we realized that there was the parallel effort by Professor Laura Massour at Sacred Heart, the Omart Graves. She and I actually got together and said, well, there's all of this work on history of Bowie, so we sort of put our efforts together. She and I are co-authoring this volume of essays on Bowie. There's another effort by another professor, Mendoza, Elsa Mendoza, who actually worked with the Georgetown Project, chronicling the Jesuit slavery at White Marsh. She's also doing some original research on this. So the reason for my presentation tonight is to ask for some sort of, not financial support, but some sort of a city council recognition of the historical nature of the omissions. And this is not a D E I project, never has been. We've been, I mean, I'm a local historian. I like history, and so I've been researching this for a while now. Like I said, I've been doing research in Bowie for about 10 years now. I did a history book with Bowie Pam Williams. Anyhow, the idea then is to present the efforts that we've been working at, this whole idea of chronicling the enslaved here in Bowie, in Piscataway, Canoe Land, and in a way to chronicle this so that we're able to give a fuller history, a richer history of Bowie and the, you know, this place. So the idea is that, you know, the, I would, I came here not to ask for any sort of support, financial support, but the city's recognition of this omission of the enslaved, especially at Bel Air Mansion, also White Marsh, the Jesuit history there, the Omart Graves. And also, what is most interesting is, there's new research about the African Americans, enslaved African Americans who were here in Prince George's County, filed suits in Washington, DC, challenging slavery. This has been an effort of historical significance that we are trying to bring all of this information together in this book. The idea of challenging slavery itself is a bold move that the, some of the enslaved African Americans undertook at that time. There's also another aspect of the fugitivity, the runaway slaves, who, whose lives were also, have also been chronicled by Professor Deneen Brown, who's a Washington Post writer and also a professor at University of Maryland. So we are bringing all of this research together. There's a lot of efforts going on to chronicle this history, and just wanted to bring it to your attention that, you know, Bowie is a place of so much history, I mean, going back 400, 500 years, and some of us local historians are trying to chronicle some of this history, some of the neglected history. So I'm here humbly and respectfully to say, you know, to bring this to your attention, that the efforts are ongoing, and any sort of recognition at all. I think the book would be, we want the book to come out to commemorate the 250th anniversary of Independence. So of course, all of you city council members will get a copy, but also, we really would appreciate any sort of recognition. Thank you so very much.
Hey, thank you. And if you could, please make sure you leave your contact information with the city clerk.
Yes, Mayor, yes, thank you.
Next, we have Les. I'm sorry, I've gotten so familiar with Les.
Okay. I just want to talk about the agenda packet that was attached to the agenda, okay? It's full of important and complicated details from several sources. It's comprised of over 650 pages. There are items regarding software engineering, economic planning, and others. I just got to ask, how many of you have read the 656 pages? I wasn't able to do it, and having a good understanding of all of it. I hope that the city council gets briefed from people that really are on top of these type of things and have an intimate knowledge so that you understand it, because one day you're probably going to have to vote on a lot of this stuff. Okay? Interesting makeup on our city council here, made up of diverse group of individuals regarding different experience, providing a panel of folks with complimentary knowledge and experience, and I think that's a good thing, because it covers a lot of ground. More specifically, I want to comment on items with my own opinions, but first, let's look at today's environment. We have a new administration in DC that needs to be monitored by the city. Interesting is the information that we get about the economy being strong. I would like to bring out some facts that need to be considered. Just found out, just looked at some today, credit card debt has been rising to unprecedented levels, and continues to go up, where savings accounts are being depleted at the same time. That kind of sends an interesting message. National debt is at an all-time high, inflation is still out there as far as I can see, see it, regardless of what the sources tell us, okay? I also suggest that when looking at unemployment stats, check out the U1 through the U6. It tells us more of a detailed account of what's really happening, just the U3, which is pretty much what everybody looks at. State Maryland budget shortfall is so big, I don't see us ever being, that ever being rectified. Where are the massive dollars left behind by the previous governor, and where is the rest of the money going? What do we have to show for the spending? I don't think very much, in my opinion. Okay? I'll let you, it's the same thing with PG County. You know, where does that leave the City of Bowie and citizens? I'll let you mull that over. You know more about this than I do, I'm sure. An appropriate stance forward would be to focus on items that are needed and put aside those that are nice to have until our future becomes more clear. Regarding proposed Popeye's Chicken Restaurant, let me talk about that a second. I'll go from one to the other in the agenda. Do we really need another chicken restaurant in Bowie to cannibalize existing businesses of the same type? I personally think not. Okay, let me talk about the energy portion. Let me talk about the energy portion and the efficiency stuff. Looks very impressive, details, and well-thought-out. It's over the top, complicated, and I think there's only one person on the council that can really assess this info, okay? Hopefully, that person will guide the rest of the council in a good direction. Part of the energy presentation is in regard to vehicles using public safety. Regarding public safety is not, regarding, public safety is not about money, it's about response time, safety of the citizens and the providers, and those are police, fire, and EMTs. I suggest that the public safety folks be allowed to get the vehicles they need, first and foremost, so they can keep us and themselves as safe as possible. Please don't saddle public safety with entities with vehicles that make them less effective. They're always, there are always unintended consequences to plans like this. The ones that EV fires burn extremely hot and are subject to explosions, they are very difficult to extinguish. Some time ago, I presented a proposal to obtain equipment specifically designed to address EV fires, and it went on deaf ears. I'd like to hear what the engineers have to say about EV fires and how it presents dangerous circumstances to first responders, citizens, and property. Stating that they are, stating that these fires are rare is not an answer, since the push to go to EVs across the board, it will increase the population and create a greater possibility for disasters and fires and explosions. I fully support also, let me talk about the Economic Development Committee meeting, which I had the opportunity to go to, I'll be brief. I fully support the Economic Development Committee and would like to say, like to say, I see the liaison, John Henry King, and the members to be very diligent, logical, and dedicated. They're really good people, and I enjoyed going to those meetings. I'm curious, however, to know if we have any TIFs, D I F S, for, at this time, or plan to have any new TIFs in the system. And I'd like to thank you for listening to me. You're all dedicated people. I thank you for everything that you do, and I'm glad you're here. Have a good holiday.
All right, thank you. We now have Jesse Blunt. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually senior over in the Bowie Commons community, and I'm here tonight to try to get some direction or some type of suggestion as to how I can go about getting HUD to, or finding out how to get directed to the right HUD contacts so that I can actually have them advocate for the seniors and the tenants, which would include myself. We have a lot of problems. We have new owners who've come in. We've never met with new owners. They have actually, they have the mediators of, which would be the property manager and the regional manager. And offices never open, it's very rarely open, it's very, very rarely, though, the staff be available to us. And I'm at Wits End right now, we're trying to get my rent ledgers squared away properly. When you reach out to them, they operate up in Baltimore, it's always a two or three-day turnaround time, and I can't, I can't live like that. And a lot of, a lot of the seniors, they're bedridden, and some of them do not use computers. I'm computer literate. I've held a lot of jobs, I've paid my dues to be where I am. And so I really, really just need the proper representation, someone that's going to advocate for the seniors, someone that's going to help me feel comfortable and trust where I live, because where I'm at now, I don't trust, I don't trust the property manager, nor do I trust the regional manager. And I've never met the owner, so I don't, I don't, I don't know. I was told that they're going to meet with us in December. I was told that they were actually going to meet with us upon taking on the property. None of that happened. There were packets that we had to sign. There are things in my lease that they're now questioning, and every day, things change, and nobody actually gives proper notice in writing. I have tons of emails to support all the things I'm saying here tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. What we'll do is we'll make sure we'll get your name with the...
Okay.
City Clerk, and we'll go from there.
I have already responded to her via email, and so I, but she hasn't seen that yet, so that should answer her questions or gets her to the right person.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. We'll now move on to presentations. The O'Bowie Arts and Heritage Committee, please come forward. What we would like to do is have council members, excuse me, council, let's go down, and as they're presented, we can greet them, okay?
All of us?
Yeah, all of us, come on down.
Everyone except Wes Green. Everybody but Wes.
We got everybody, okay. Wait a minute, no, we're missing somebody. There we go. Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good evening. All right, once again, good evening, Mayor Adams, as city council members and citizens of Bowie. My name is Mr. William Green of the Old Town, oh, I was told not to use the Old Town, O'Bowie Arts and Heritage Committee, which is the O'Bowie Celebrate, our festival logo, and I would like for the steering committee members to come up, if they can, and for the ones that can't stand, you can remain at your seats. We have the following people that's here at this time, that's on that committee, is Ms. Verna, Ms. Kathleen, Ms. Isabel, Ms. Heidi, Ms. Laverne, Ms. Tracy, Ms. Penny, Dr. Latoya, Mr. Barnes, and of course, yours truly, Mr. Green. There are individuals that make up the O'Bowie Arts and Heritage Steering Committee, and also, the organizers of the O'Bowie Celebrate, which is the festival that we had Saturday, September the 5th, 2024. We estimated over 5,000 participants that participated in our fourth annual festival. And that's just a rough estimate, coming and going. Now, with that in mind, with that number of people showing up, we've been coming up here and fighting for O'Bowie for a long time, in terms of trying to get some of these things done, such as that bridge, the sidewalks, the roads, and maintaining some of the old facilities that are, have been abandoned. And we have some residents that's in the area also that need some assistance in terms of housing. This is a strong sign that O'Bowie is worthwhile preserving. We have been supported by the City of Bowie, our community supporters, volunteers, and helpers. On that note, I would like to have Mr. Barnes to present the awards and certificates. Could I get you to come up, Mr. Barnes?
Good evening. Gerald Barnes is my name. The first certificate of appreciation is for Sergeant John McMasterz. Is he available? Okay, we'll pass that on to him. The second is Lieutenant John Knott. These are all members of the Bowie Police Department that assisted us during the festival. Corporal David Redman.
Redman.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate your help. The next person that we'd like to recognize is Tahisha Minor, who is with Parks Operations. Nick Surgen from the Community Services. Also from Community Services, Matt Corley. Is Matt here today?
He's passing bedtime.
The next volunteer is Stephanie Smith. Also from Community Services, Edward McLean. Thank you for your help. The next volunteer we'd like to recognize is John Teasdale. John? You can come around. Thank you. Thank you for your help. This is for you. Why don't you go up and check your hands? The next certificate of appreciation is for Salita Hamilton, who is Master Walker's The next volunteer we'd like to recognize is Mr. Hassan Abdullah. Thank you. Thank you for your help. Mr. Abdullah?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Here, you can take over.
Would you like me to say the name?
Stop that, stop that.
The next is for my best friend, Mary Ann Casabian.
Philippe San Diego is our next volunteer we'd like to recognize. Mr. Stafford Williams is our next volunteer we'd like to recognize. Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your help. The next volunteer we'd like to recognize is Carl Catan.
No, Catan, Catan.
Is he here tonight?
Yes. Knights Columbus.
Okay. You want to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know that. There he is.
This is Mr. Catan. He's the Grand Knight of the Knights Columbus at the Pita Boil Council at the Ascension Parish. He assisted with helping us also.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. Carl Robinson is our next volunteer we'd like to recognize.
Thank you.
Is he here tonight? Matt Corley from the Community Services.
Oh, duplicate? Okay, I think it was.
Melanie Rosa is our next volunteer we'd like to recognize. Yancy Factor?
That's her daughter, she'll take it.
Oh, okay. Close enough. Yeah, if you would give them all a round of applause, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, to keep it going, we have Ms. Tulie Thomas.
All right, to keep it going, we have Ms. Tuli Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Mr. Hayawatha Davis. Who will also accept on the behalf of Faith Fellowship Church.
Thank you.
From Troop 1559, we have Tristan Harrell. Also from Troop 1559, we have Juana Sosa. This troop really showed up. We also have Angelo Cole from Troop 1559. Also from Troop 1559, we have Valentino Cole. The troop master of 1559, we have Ms. Wendy Harrell. The troops really came out this year. From Troop 403, we have Jamil Higgins. We also have his son, Mason Higgins, from Troop 403. Last but not least, Mr. Richard Anyu.
Mr. Carl Katan from the Knights of Columbus from the Pita Boil Council, I need you to come forward once more, please. Front and center, sir. We're going to make sure you get tortured by the mayor, okay? On the behalf of the committee, also the steering committee, we'd like to present this to council as well. And by you being the grandniece, I figured you would put that into good hands.
Great, thank you. I do want to say that our council does like to support the community with the efforts that our worthy warden puts forth with the community. So with his efforts that the community needs assistance and our volunteers from our council. I'm so happy that we have someone in our midst, like Mr. Green, to keep us connected and to give us opportunity to support the community. And with that, thank you.
Okay, we have a few thank you letters we'd like to give to some of our head staff. We have Nick Surgeon from Community Service Department. Nick, I knew you were around here somewhere. I'm going to get you a pair of roller skates.
Thank you.
Up front, center, sir.
One more time.
That's why we have everybody up here. We want to make it official. Okay? We're good. All right, sir. At this time, we would like for Jose, Public Works Department, to come up. See here?
What was the name?
Jose.
Oh, okay. I don't know.
No Jose? Okay. All right. I'll give that to Mr. Lot. He will take care of that for me, I'm quite sure. And speaking of the devil, the next one is for our city manager. I understand he made sure these paychecks and everything are signed. Mr. Al Lot, we need you to come front and center, please. This is a young man that moves around very quietly. He's very conservative when he moves. I like his moves. It's just outstanding, sir. Okay? I know that's it. Here's your certificate, sir. Thank you for services. This next thank you letter is to Chief Dwayne Preston of the Police Department. Is he here tonight? No. Mr. Redman, would you take this on his behalf? Okay, sir. Not a problem. We had one more thank you letter, and that was supposed to be for the Bowie United Methodist Church, which is for Pastor Angela Shad Cottrell. Unfortunately, she was not able to make it tonight, but she just asked me to make her name known, because she has supported the whole group in the city at the same time she's supported us. Okay? Thank you. And with no further ado, so we don't hold the council up, the rest of our certificates, we'll take them home with us, and we'll call those folks that did not show tonight, so we won't bother to call their names at this time. And we would like to thank, right? We're going to thank them? You sure? All night? Say it all night? I'm trying to...
Mr. Green. Mr. Green. We do have an honorable mention for Tony Hansberry.
You want to come around here and mention that? One more thing before we leave, after Cecilia, you get through, we're going to have Ms. Teasdale come up and just say a few words, okay?
Okay. Hi, I'm Celia Murphy, and I'm also on the Steering Committee. And we really, all of us really want to acknowledge this wonderful, wonderful woman. And this is a special mention, and her name is Tony Hansberry. And she drove those golf carts. I'm telling you, made so many of these festival goers very happy. And she just has an amazing disposition, wonderful humor, and just boundless energy. So we would like to recognize her.
Ms. Teasdale. Ms. Teasdale is our co-chair, along with her other co-chair, Ms. Kathleen.
Thank you. And it is just a pleasure to be here with this terrific group. Tony, yay, all right. Tony was... Tony, we just counted on to get us wherever we needed to go, and she was always there and always willing.
No, you're my girl.
Well, it's mutual. We've been buddies for a long time. Yeah. You have to do the gaunt... You have to run the gauntlet. I want to give you just one little piece of history about the Old Bowie Celebrates Festival. And that little piece of history strongly requires you to recognize Mr. Green, because without his support, without his, just determination, it probably never would have happened. And as you know, this is what, the third one year we were rained out, but we've had wonderfully successful years, and in large part because of the support of all of you, the support of Bowie. And each year, it gets a little bit bigger, and we try to make it always a little bit better, because we think it's a wonderful way to show off this marvelous city that we live in. So thank you to each of you for what you've done to help make the festival possible. And you can't imagine a more wonderful group of people to work with than this group of people. Thank you very much.
I just want to dito what Verna said. I mean, this would not happen without these wonderful people that are up here backing us and the support that we get from the council and the city. And that's the only way that this event happens, and the wonderful volunteers that come out on that day to make everything happen. So thank you all very much.
So Mayor, I think we're done. You all have an AC. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Under new business, we will now be moving on to Item B, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy.
Mayor, we're under city boards and committees, is what's next.
What's that?
City boards and committees is what's next.
Oh, I'm moving a little fast here, huh? We're now on city boards and committees, appointments, reappointments, and swearing in. Mr. Kevin Lopez Cruz was interviewed on November 18th, 2024, for appointment to the Diversity Committee. Council concur to appoint him to the committee as a regular member for a two-year term. Councilmember Rogers, will you please make a motion to appoint him?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, I have the pleasure to appoint Mr. K... I move to appoint Mr. Kevin Lopez Cruz.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. Opposed, same favor. Hearing none. Congratulations. The appointment, the motion passed. Come on up. Come on up.
Come on up, Tom. Right up here. You got to swear your oath.
Right here. Right here. No, right here. Right here. Right here.
There we go. You're good.
Congratulations.
It's got to be the 10 feet or it doesn't count.
That's right, exactly. All right, that's for you. And they'd all like to shake your hand.
Okay, wait a minute. You got to swear a minute.
All right, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Lopez Cruz.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
That I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of regular and state of Diversity Committee.
Execute the responsibilities of the...
Diversity.
Of the Diversity Committee.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
Let's start again. We will now move to council announcements.
Can we do a photo? Can we do a picture? Oh, sure.
Do you want to stand there and get a photo this way? Okay. Do you want us to stay up here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's supposed to last, or is it okay? That's going to be like two hours from now.
Okay. Because the department chair, who is state for the English Department, wants to... Sure, come on down. Absolutely.
Verna, can I ask you a favor? John, can I ask you a favor? Can someone grab a picture for this gentleman, please?
Les is going to take it.
All right, I apologize, John.
That's a penalty for showing up. Hey, how about if we all smile? Okay? That's one. Let me get another one. I'm going to sell this back to you at another later date. Okay, there we go.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Les. Appreciate you.
Okay, we will now move on to council announcements. Are there any announcements by council members? Councilmember St.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very brief one. Mr. Green and the committee handed out a lot of paper earlier to a lot of different folks, but I just did want to just take a knowledge, excuse me, a moment and acknowledge the folks who handed out all those awards. Verna, Kathleen, John, Dr. Green, Dr. Moss, and a whole bunch of people who I see have now left, who did a really great job working with our staff. I also really want to credit Dustin Cuzan, who's now, I think, like the planning director for Loudoun County or something, who started this effort about five years ago. It was his idea back at Old Town Grill and he got the initial group together that did this and it continues to live today thanks to the wonderful efforts of the many volunteers we saw tonight, as well as our wonderful city staff and my council colleagues who support the event every year financially. So, just want to say thank you.
Any other council announcements at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Truesdale.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna just echo the sentiments to from Mayor, Mayor Adams in terms of wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and happy holidays and how blessed we are in this city. And lastly, I just want to make an announcement in terms of just a condolences to a family, young brother by the name of Cornelius McDonald, who was struck last week by gunfire. He had an organization, a youth organization called Stay Solid, and he was a community activist. And we, he, you know, the county, the city, not particularly this city, but the county and all, you know, has lost a great brother, son, and a father. So, just want to send prayers out and condolences.
Councilwoman Andemamada.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to offer a brief apology. I know that during citizens' participation, I did hand out a piece of paper to my colleagues, so I didn't want anyone to think that I was not paying attention or trying to interrupt. I did write a letter to Secretary Reagan of the EPA a couple of weeks ago in regards to some matters of the city, and I wanted to hand out to my colleagues the secretary's response to my letter written to him. So, that's all. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we will now move on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and residents out there. We are, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I did, and I wish everybody happy holidays coming up in December. One business point, the bulk trash solicitation that we all will be going out this week. And so, hopefully, if the bids come in within our budgets and all that, we'll be bringing it back to you in January with a budget amendment if necessary. But I want you all to know that bid's about to go out. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. At this time, I will open the floor for a motion regarding consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, like to move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Less my item E, which was moved early.
That's correct.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now move on to old business. I see no old business on the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct, Mayor.
All right, we'll now move on to the new business. We will start with item A, detailed site plan DSP 2003-02 Popeyes Restaurant at Mill Branch Crossing. Go ahead, Mr. Miner.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Joe Miner, the city planning director, here to introduce this item. This is detailed site plan DSP 20003-02. It's a revision to the Mill Branch Crossing site plan. It is for a Popeyes restaurant, approximately 3,000 square feet in size on a parcel that's approximately one acre. The site, as you know, is under development now. There are townhouses being built in the rear portion of the site. This is the property that's right across from Walmart on US 301, on the east side of US 301 at Mill Branch Road. The preliminary subdivision plan was approved in 2021 for this property, and since that time, there has been one other plan that's come through for review. That's for a dash in and convenience store, gas pumps, and car wash at the northern end of the development. And this applicant is proposing, as I said, about a 3,000-square-foot Popeyes eating and drinking establishment with a drive-through. And that is shown on attachment two of your package, a copy of the site plan, and the landscape plan is attachment three. Fortunately, we don't have a PowerPoint or anything like that tonight, but it's a rather straightforward and simple case. The window of review was really very short for this turnaround time. We received the referral only a few weeks ago, and I believe the county planning board date is in early January. So, we had to bring the application forward without the Bowie Advisor Planning Board's input on this agenda because there are no other council meetings this month. The criteria for approval of a detailed site plan is simply that the planning board may approve the site plan if it finds that the plan represents a reasonable alternative to satisfying the county's site design guidelines. We did look at the comments that were produced by the reviewing agencies at Park and Planning. There are a number of recommendations that they made, which we've picked up in our staff recommendation. Also, looking at the city's development review guidelines, there was a guideline dealing with lighting, site lighting, that they be full cutoff fixtures to avoid unnecessary light spill over and glare on adjacent roadways and properties. And so, that is the council's policy, and we recommend that that be also made a condition of approval. With respect to the staff recommendation, as I mentioned, we recommend approval with four conditions. I understand, excuse me, I understand the applicant is not in agreement with conditions two and three, and I'll let Mr. Gibbs, the attorney, speak to that. But conditions two and three relate to a suggestion by the Park and Planning staff that the driveway around the restaurant not be a continuously, a continuous driveway around the building and that the side of the driveway that faced the street, St. Lola Drive, should be removed and that area replaced with green space in order to create an outdoor seating area. And it's my understanding after talking to Mr. Gibbs that that really is not possible. It doesn't fit within the circulation plan that's used for this type of facility and that the company was not going to provide outdoor seating on these types of projects. So, conditions two and three can be removed from the staff recommendation. So, essentially, we're recommending approval with two conditions. One being a minimum of two bike racks shall be provided near the entrance to the restaurant. And then, as I said about the site lighting, that the site lighting be made, designed with full cutoff fixtures to avoid unnecessary light spill over and glare on adjacent properties and roadways. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation. Mr. Edward Gibbs is here representing the applicant. He can make a short presentation.
Okay. Just come forward. There you go.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Adams, members of the council. Edward Gibbs here, an attorney with offices in Largo. And I'm pleased to be here this evening representing Green Branch LLC, the master developer of this project. And Mr. Chesley, the principal of Green Branch, is with us this evening, as is his engineer, Kim Morgan from Land Tech. And then Popeyes' specific civil engineer, Mr. Ethan Pacifico of Bowman Consulting, is directly behind Ms. Morgan. I really can't add a great deal. I will just say that, as most of you know, we have been here on several occasions during the development entitlement history of this project, and we're really happy that dirt is being moved. Stanley Martin is building townhomes. Mr. Chesley has in fact sold the multifamily component, and they're ready to commence their operations. There are 77,000 and some change square feet of commercial retail uses that were approved for the project. The city has very, my client's very happy that the city has supported all of his efforts with this project. And this is the first truly retail offering that has come before you. Dash In has been approved. There are two other site plans that have been filed. They'll be coming shortly. But this Popeyes restaurant is the first detailed site plan. It's a use permitted as a matter of right in the zone, but you do have to get a detailed site plan approval, and that's why we're here. I did have a concern about conditions two and three in the staff report. They weren't, the Park and Planning staff report has not yet been released. Items two and three that Mr. Miner picked up as conditions in his staff report, they were, they were questions that were raised by the urban design division in their referral at subdivision and development review committee. They were not conditions in the Park and Planning staff report. They had four or five major conditions, and they had about 10 or 11 minor conditions that they wanted to discuss. This, these two items were raised as questions. Would it make sense to have one-way circulation right in front of the building, which fronts on St. Lola Lane, the internal spine road of the project? And would we be interested in having some outdoor seating area? And the outdoor seating is just not in the Popeyes business model. Quite frankly, they find that most of their patrons these days are servicing through the drive-through window, and they, they just don't find a need or a use for any outdoor seating at their restaurants. And changing the access from two-way to one-way in front of the restaurant would solely have been required if there was going to be outdoor seating to provide enough extra space for a patio. So, we just can't do those things. They're not required by the zoning ordinance. And I'm very happy that Mr. Miner saw fit to withdraw them as recommended conditions in his staff report. We agreed with everything else that he had to say in his report, and we have no problem with the full cutoff light fixtures. We think that's a good idea and should be done. So, with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so I just want to, for clarification, you're saying the two conditions that Mr. Miner included in there, you have no problem with them whatsoever?
He had four conditions, one, two, three, and four. We had no problem with conditions one and four. We did have a problem with conditions two and three because they were not staff conditions, they were just questions. And so, with the removal of conditions two and three, yes, we have no problem with conditions one and four.
Mr. Miner, are those questions that simply need to be removed or?
Well, we would agree with the summary that Mr. Gibbs has given, that those were ideas generated by the Park and Planning staff, which we reviewed, we agreed with. But again, the criteria for approval for site plans is that the proposed plan represents a reasonable alternative for satisfying the site design guidelines. So, conditions two or three, two and three are not necessary in order to accomplish that. So, they can be removed.
Okay, so your recommendation, I'm trying to get you on the record, your recommendation is we can remove those two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions, anyone? No. Madam Clerk, are we to open this up for a public hearing?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Or just take action?
It's just action. No public hearing.
So, we'll look for approval? Entertain a motion?
I do have one quick question of the applicant, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. On recommendation number one, and actually, let me direct this to Mr. Miner initially, and I see Ashley's here as well from the planning office. Recommendation number one is a minimum of two bike racks that should be provided near the entrance to the restaurant. Looking at the map and just trying to make sense of the property, can a person safely navigate via bike in and out of this restaurant if there's like car traffic in a parking lot?
Well, Councilmember Stev, there's not an exclusive bike lane going into the restaurant from the street, but it's obviously a shared space with the vehicular travel lanes. I believe Mr. Gibbs has described to me that there is some additional treatment that they're going to make on the pavement, and perhaps he can add to the answer here for you.
Gibbs, am I gonna get run over riding my bike in and out of this restaurant?
You know, I had the same concern when I first met with staff about this comment, and we had a virtual meeting with staff. It was either November 13th or 15th with the supervisor of the urban design division and the staff writer, and they had asked for a bicycle circulation plan. And I said, quite frankly, we really don't want bicycles necessarily circulating through here. It might be a safety issue. But I said, there are two points of access that there, the northernmost access point is two-way in and out, and the bike racks are going to be positioned immediately inside that access point next to the building, the front of the building. And so, it's just a very minimal amount of the traffic through, through the parking lot that they have to navigate. Basically, you pull in, go directly to them, and pull back out. And we're not sure there's going to be a lot of bicycle traffic to begin with, and so we are going to mark that as bicycle lane.
Okay.
On-site to make sure it's as safe as possible.
So, the placement of the bike racks is such that it minimizes the overlap between bike traffic and car traffic?
No question, no question.
And then, the designated movement will be indicated and will be visible to drivers?
Yes, it should be just in and out for them.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs, and thank you again, Mr. Miner.
Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just to follow up on a couple of things. So, you're, I was a little confused. So, you are providing bike racks as part of the design?
We are.
Just not specifically where staff has called out for them to be?
No, we, we were at consensus with staff during our telephone conversation.
Okay.
We requested a virtual meeting with staff of Park and Planning to go over their comments made at S D R C Committee. And so, the bicycle lane was one of those items where we said we really didn't want a bicycle lane through the whole restaurant parking lot, and we had said our, our bike racks were proposed to be right at the entrance, and they said, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed that there's the issue of the bike trail and what have you, but you still have a major component behind you of residential that you would expect people maybe using their bikes to come since they're not crossing over 301. So, there would be a need, so glad to hear that. I have a quick question for Mr. Miner on the issue of the lighting. When you say full cutoff, are you talking about essentially downward oriented lighting? Just to make sure I'm clear of the terminology?
Yes, that's what the terminology is.
Okay. And I've been a long time in supporting you. I just want to make sure we run the same wavelength with that. The last question I have is with regards to the recommendation about the two-way drive aisle in front of the store. It seems, I couldn't, I've been trying to go through my package to find, but it seems to me behind, on the side and behind the store, you have a single or single direction traffic. Is that correct?
There's two-way traffic.
All the way around?
Indeed. Except that when you come in, if you're coming in the northernmost driveway, you can either come in or out. The, but when you circle around to the, to the west side of the building, which is abutting closest to 301.
Right.
Then circle around the south side, the driveway coming out is exit only.
Okay.
Okay? But there, there are, that driveway is, I think, at least 22 feet, sometimes 25 feet, circling around the building, which allows for two-way traffic.
Okay. Not exactly certain. I won't debate that issue or argue the issue. Then last is just a general comment in regards to the outdoor seating. I really don't have a big problem with that because you're right up at butt 301. So, I imagine people won't be sitting out there even if you provided it to them, so.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, it's, we just didn't, well, the Popeyes didn't think it would ever be used.
So, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council question? Councilwoman Andebamadu.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, good to see you, Mr. Gibbs.
Always nice to see you.
I just have a quick question. I'm grateful that my colleague asks the more structural questions, but I'd love to understand, how do we land on a Popeyes here?
Um, that's, I'm not involved in marketing. Um, I, I, you know, Mr. Chesley might be able to answer that, but, uh, uh, I, 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 I can't.
Okay.
I can't.
I mean, I know that, I guess this is just more common for my colleagues because technically this hearing is not the appropriate forum to have this discussion, but I'm so not in support of a Popeyes being here whatsoever. Um, but I know this is a detailed site plan hearing, and I'd be the first one to remind everybody else that it's a detailed site plan hearing, so I don't really have any other questions in terms of the structural design issues, but just rather being clear that I'm really trying to understand how we landed on a Popeyes here. I think from my district, from where I sit in District Four, we've been very clear that we don't want any more Popeyes adjacent-like restaurants or anything close to it. Um, and given that this, in this particular parcel of land sits on the intersection of 301 and is very visible, is what it seems like, it's just not the right branding that we're looking for in the city of Bowie, or I'll at least speak for District Four and say that this is not what we're looking for in terms of speaking to other restaurants and saying that we're trying to attract them. This is just not an adjacent type of establishment that we're looking for. So, um, I know that there are no further questions for you, but I just want to be clear and put that out there on behalf of my district, District Four, in no way supportive Popeyes going here, so I just will not participate in the rest of this hearing.
Right.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments and understand them, and, you know, it might bear fruit to, uh, have a sidebar discussion about that going forward, but.
Could you lift the mic up just a little bit?
Sure. Anyhow, perhaps a discussion, uh, going forward about other users, uh, would, would be helpful for you and for Mr. Chesley.
Councilwoman Choesdale.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I, this is a detailed, um, form. So I'm not too much, uh, really keen on, um, viewing the maps. Usually we have a map or something, a screen, we can kind of see where the drive-in is going and things of that sort of. Uh, we don't have that, but for the most part, um, can you elaborate and maybe Mr. Minor can, uh, give more, more clarity to, uh, the driveway, the two driveways? So the recommend, recommendation for two has been, like, it's, um, it hasn't been thrown out the window, but it's something that perhaps can be considered, or if you can give more clarity on, because what I'm, what I'm just seeing, I'm just seeing a site and a big X, one-way going in, um, coming off of 301.
Oh, that's the, okay, so the entire, and look, my apologies for not having some type of electronic submission, uh, that I could have given to Mr. Minor. I was under the impression he would have had something that would at least show the site and, uh, but in any event, I, I could have done that too, and so.
No, that's fine.
Just as, just as much responsibility for that. But the, the site, of course, has expansive frontage on U S 301. And so it, the project will have two points of access. The first will be a right-in, right-out, directly north of this particular parcel, uh, from U S 301. Okay, so that'll be an access point right directly off 301. The southernmost access will come off of Mill Branch Road. And when you come down Mill Branch, there will be a private road that is known as, uh, St. Ridgely Boulevard, and that runs east-west to intersect with the Green Branch Regional Park, where we're providing access for the park. Uh, that fortunately, it looks like it's going to be coming online here in the not-too-distant future. So from St. Ridgely Boulevard, there is an internal spine road that runs north and south, all the way up to the right-in, right-out, and a little bit beyond. And the commercial lots all abut the western side of that roadway. This particular site will have two driveways for just this site, one on the northern portion of the site and one on the southern portion of the site, um, that will allow, the northern access drive will allow two-way in and out. The southernmost driveway will just be exit only. So I, if that.
That, that helps, that helps a lot, and I, I will be studying, um, what Mr. Minor sent us, um, as well. Um, it'll probably be in phase four by the time I figure it out. But for the most part, um, I, I, I do echo, um, in terms of my colleague, in terms of, uh, the variety of, of restaurants and things, that sort, um, and even retail, but I, I do understand that, um, rooftops attract retail, and, um, you need all kinds of, uh, businesses, um, and, and incorporating with, uh, with, with the residents. I think my, my big issue is, uh, the safety, um, in terms of how the landscape and structure is, is set up. So, uh, appreciate your presentation, and, um, I'll, I'll be emailing more, more questions in terms of, uh, just different variety of, um, service stores as well as, you know, what, what can we do as a, as a city?
Yeah, and, and I, I promise I'll bring better, I will, not better, I will bring visual aids to our next hearing, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anyone like to make a motion at this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, for a detailed site plan, DSP 200302.
Okay, with the, uh, recommendation and?
With the recommendation, with the recommendation regarding the detailed site plan for the, uh, new.
For the items, okay.
For the item.
Good.
I'm not clear on it. You're accepting?
Yes.
Awesome. He's accepting it with the recommendations for the.
A second.
It's been moved and probably second? Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, sign in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can you do it?
Hey.
I'd like to abstain.
You'd like to abstain?
Yeah.
And, um, I'm sorry for that. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five-two, five-one-one. Five-one-one, five-four-one-one.
Affirmative, yes.
Okay.
We'll now move on to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy.
Good evening.
I'll turn it over to City Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Ashley Diaz, I'm the Sustainability Manager, and tonight we have Loring Consulting Engineers to present the draft Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy. This serves as an update to the previous version that was done about 15 years ago, uh, and takes a close look at our city government building and fleet energy usage and provides steps forward for us. We'd be happy to answer any questions after the presentation, and I will turn it over to Todd and Brian.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, my name is Todd Stephens. I am a Vice President with Loring Engineers, um, and I'm a mechanical engineer by degree and training, and I work in the energy efficiency and commissioning fields. And like Ashley said, we're here to present the report we've been preparing since earlier this summer, um, doing a study on reducing the town properties' energy consumption and carbon emissions. Um, just some background on our company. We are headquartered in New York City, but we are doing this work out of our local Gaithersburg, Maryland office. We've got over 200 employees. I won't go through all the numbers, but we've been around since 1956 with our first marquee project being, uh, the electrical design for the original, uh, Twin Towers World Trade Center site. Brief overview of this presentation, so we're going to go through the overview and the purpose of why we put this report together, uh, for the city, um, and we're going to go through some of the background information on what was dictating some of the analysis and the decisions we made, particularly through some of the legislation at the Maryland state level. Um, we're going to go through what energy benchmarking we did and what the energy use breakdown was for the facilities that the city owns that we analyzed. Go over some of the energy conservation measures, or ECMs, uh, for short. Uh, the ECMs are individual measures for individual buildings designed to achieve the carbon and energy reduction. Um, some of them are, they're in different categories, so there are operational changes that can be made, there's capital improvement projects that can be executed, and then there's also renewable energy projects that can be implemented to, all three of these will work together to, um, meet your goals. Uh, finally get into that fleet electrification because studying all sources of carbon emissions was part of our scope, then on to next steps and a question and answer period. Um, so we were retained by the city through a public solicitation that we responded to, um, went through an interview process, and were awarded. Um, the city of Bowie was, uh, wishing to update its energy efficiency and conservation strategy, like Ashley said, previously done, uh, 15 years ago. This refresher is going to include, uh, new mandates from the state of Maryland as well as some new, uh, some new incentives that are available, um, in that, uh, towards that end. So the goals of this, uh, energy efficiency conservation, uh, plan was to assess the current energy usage and the greenhouse gas emissions, that's the benchmarking phase, which includes the city-owned buildings and vehicles. We're going to provide, we were to provide a blueprint in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions, enhancing energy efficiency, and supporting the goal of net zero emissions by the year 2045. We're going to provide a plan, which, uh, I believe you have, to meet the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022, um, which involves building energy performance standards, reducing the energy use intensity of individual buildings, as well as reducing onsite gas-fired carbon emissions. And then we, uh, had a triage or a prioritization of actions to set target dates for future projects. And Brian?
Yeah, thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Brian Walker. First, I'm going to talk about the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act that was passed in 2022. Uh, so this law requires that all buildings over 35,000 square feet, with some exceptions, must annually report their energy consumption and meet certain building energy performance standards, acronym we call BEPS. BEPS sets limits for net direct emissions and site energy use intensity. And what those terms mean, net direct emissions refers to, uh, essentially the burning of fossil fuels onsite, typically natural gas for heating, and site energy use intensity is, is basically the total annual energy usage at a facility divided by its square footage. So with BEPS setting limits on those, they are dialing back, um, the burning of fossil fuels onsite for, for heating, and also requiring energy efficiency upgrades to buildings. Alternative compliance fees will be assessed annually, beginning with calendar year 2030 data by the state of Maryland for non-compliance. So this applies to, uh, three buildings, uh, three city-owned buildings, the Bowie City Hall that we're in, Ken Hill Center, and the Futis Ice Arena. And the, the timeline for this, uh, for this law, 2025 is the first year that annual energy benchmarking reports are due. Uh, 2030 is the first year, as I mentioned, that alternative compliance fees will be assessed based on facility's actual energy usage. Uh, so the first five-year period has one standard, the, the next five-year period starting in 2035 has a second, more stringent standard, and finally in 2040, there is the final BEPS standard, which requires net zero direct emissions and, uh, a very stringent energy efficiency standard. So that means by 2040, that all buildings affected by this law would have to be completely electrified with no onsite, uh, burning of fossil fuels. Um, just one more thing about that, as it applies to, uh, the Bowie City Buildings that we found, um, there are going to be some challenges, um, that we discuss in our report with regards to how to, to meet this. Uh, we do provide a, a plan for meeting it, but there are some, some costs involved, um, some complexity, there will be some trade-offs that will have to be considered as far as, uh, there are some HVAC systems that would have to be replaced before the end of their lifespan in order to meet this timeline by the state, which is pretty aggressive. Uh, so the first part of the process to identifying how to, uh, reduce greenhouse gases and save energy across city buildings is, uh, what's called energy benchmarking, and energy benchmarking is the process of tracking and measuring and organization or facilities' energy consumption over time. So we used, um, 36 months of data, energy data at each facility or as much was available during those periods, and came up with a 12-month average for each utility. And you can see from this graph here, uh, the buildings that were included in our analysis and which ones have the greatest impact on the city's greenhouse gas emissions. So, uh, water treatment facility is, is the most, and then it's almost a three-way tie between City Hall, uh, solid waste treatment, and the ICE arena. We also looked at one calendar year of fuel purchases for city-owned, uh, vehicles. This included 210,000 gallons of gasoline and diesel, and this allows us to then look at the comparison, see the breakdown in greenhouse gas emissions by sector between buildings and vehicles, so about 61% buildings, 39% vehicles. Uh, the grass, the graph on the left is your greenhouse gas emissions within your buildings broken down by fuel source, so electricity makes up 77% of emissions, natural gas 21%, propane 2%. Then, just to give a couple example buildings, um, starting with Bowie City Hall, this is what's called the energy end-use breakdown. So this presents essentially a pie chart showing, um, the different end uses within the building, and, um, you can see what, you know, where the energy in the building is going. So about, you know, 43% to space heating, 13% is cooling, 19% to air distribution. Um, so, you know, if you're seeing about roughly 75% of the building's total energy use is going to HVAC systems. So this, this helps us to identify where we should direct our focus, um, when it comes to identifying energy conservation measures, focusing on the biggest slices of the pie. For each facility, we've also provided this, uh, analysis of monthly energy usage by electricity and gas. So continuing with City Hall here, um, as would be expected, you can see the electricity usage peaks in the summertime for air conditioning, natural gas usage peaks in the winter for heating. Uh, you'll also notice that gas usage doesn't quite go down to zero in the summer, and that's because there are, uh, hot water boilers here that are operating year-round. Uh, we'll just show one other of these for comparison, but Ken Hill Center, um, again, space heating, space cooling are the, the biggest contributors. Uh, lighting is actually the third biggest contributor there at 16%. Uh, that, that facility also just underwent a complete lighting retrofit to LEDs, so I would expect if you were looking at this data a year from now, the lighting slice of the pie should be a bit smaller. And also on Ken Hill Center, you can see, again, electricity usage peaks in the summer for air conditioning. It also has a, a smaller peak in the winter for, um, there are some electric resistance unit heaters at the site, uh, but primarily the facility is heated by gas, and you can see, as expected, natural gas usage peaking in the winter. Um, in contrast to City Hall here, it does go down to zero in the summertime, and that's, again, because this facility does not have natural gas boilers. This is heated by, uh, natural gas rooftop units that are air-cooled. So moving into the energy conservation measures, um, we identified a total of 75 energy conservation measures at 13 facilities. We then categorized the measures. We then categorized the measures by facility and by measure category. Then a year of implementation was selected for each measure, depending on how complex it is to implement and the age of the equipment in the cases of replacements. So these were categorized as follows: operational changes, capital projects. Those are broken down into HVAC, plumbing, lighting, and building enclosure, and renewable energy measures. And this chart on the right-hand side here is showing you the projected greenhouse gas emissions for all the facilities. You do, you do see some pretty drastic drops there in '27 and '28, and that is simply because we, just for, I guess, simplicity sake, lumped all the renewable energy measures into 2027 and 2028. In reality, that may get spread out a little bit more. But this is just showing the, the potential if all the recommendations in the report are implemented on the timetable recommended. We'll just show a couple snippets here of the Energy Conservation Measures summary table. This is for City Hall. You can see there's about a dozen recommendations. If you look at that third category, or third column for measure category, you can see there's a, a mixture of operational changes, capital projects, renewable energy. For each measure, there's a title. The report has a detailed description of how to implement each one of these measures. There's a recommended year of implementation, estimated utility savings. And all the way in the right-hand side, there is the CO2 emission or greenhouse gas emission savings from each measure. And just to show one other, again, for Ken Hill Center, again, there's 75 of these measures. We'll show them all tonight, but there's also about 10 or 11 measures here for Ken Hill Center. You can see, again, a mixture of operational, capital projects, and renewable. So to give a little bit of detail on a few of the recommendations, so as we mentioned, these measures are, are broken down into categories, starting with operational changes. Operational changes are recommendations that can be implemented typically at little or no cost and can be done in-house by the facility engineering staff, sometimes with a little bit of outside help from contractors. So this first measure is to modify HVAC occupancy schedule to match building hours. So currently, HVAC systems at most city-owned buildings are being operated 24/7 in the occupied mode. You know, these buildings are not occupied 24/7, so this presents a very easy, low-hanging fruit to make some drastic energy reductions at, you know, little to no cost. So this is, this would be implemented through the building automation system that controls those HVAC systems and, in some cases, at the local thermostats for facilities that are not tied into a building automation system. Again, we're just going through a few of these, but operational changes, again, this one is called hot water temperature reset. And this, this applies to buildings that have natural gas-fired boilers for heating. So currently, all natural gas boilers are operated to maintain a constant 180-degree Fahrenheit supply hot water temperature year-round. That's, that's really not necessary only on, you know, very cold days like we're having right now this time of year. For, for much of the year, you can save a lot of energy by operating them at cooler temperatures. As you can see from this graph here, what this is showing, you have return water temperature on the X-axis and thermal efficiency on the Y-axis. So in order to achieve the, the higher efficiency ratings, you would want to operate the boilers at a lower temperature. And that, this would be controlled through the building automation system by looking at the, the outside air temperature. So the colder it gets outside, you would then provide hotter water and vice versa. One more operational change, I believe. This is to disable hot water heating systems above 65-degree Fahrenheit ambient temperature. This is not for all buildings with boilers, but specifically to the Bowie Gymnasium and Bel Air Mansion. And that's because these two facilities, we feel there's not a need to operate the boilers when it is hot outside. As you can see by the graph on the right-hand side here, this is for the Bel Air Mansion. You can see that the natural gas usage, which is solely, solely for heating, there's not a significant drop from winter to summer. But there's, there's really no need for the heating usage at a couple of these facilities outside of the, the cooler months of the year. And just one note on the left-hand side here, we wanted to mention about operational changes, is that we recommend that these are not just implemented once and forgotten, but are policies that are instituted, and we, we would recommend a designated individual to ensure that they are continually followed through to ensure the persistence of savings in future years. Now, to go through a few capital projects, starting with HVAC. As we mentioned, the, the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act is going to require electrification of gas-fired heating systems. And the way to do this efficiently is with heat pumps. So some of you might be familiar with heat pumps, if you might have one at your house. So the same thing, same technology can be applied to commercial buildings. So where fuel-fired furnaces have efficiency ratings of 80% to over 90%, heat pumps have a coefficient of performance of over three, which is equivalent to 300% efficiency. And the way they do this is made possible by reversing the air conditioning cycle. So where, where fuel-fired systems can never get over 100% efficient, they're restricted to the amount of heat that's contained within the fuel it's burning. A heat pump is actually bringing in heat from the outside. So you essentially have an unlimited source of heat in the outdoors. That might seem a little counterintuitive when you're thinking about heating your house with the outdoors on a cold day. But, and, and these systems do have a harder time of working the colder it gets outside. Their efficiencies and their capacities drop a little bit. So again, continuing with heat pumps, also, you can replace existing fuel-fired boilers with heat pumps. This is not quite as straightforward as replacing fuel-fired furnaces. There are some challenges that come into play when you're talking about replacing boilers with heat pumps. Heat pumps, heat pump boilers are not able to produce the high temperatures that you typically have with gas-fired boilers. So they can have some cascading effects on the, the downstream aspects of the system, the piping, the terminal units. So this would require some detailed engineering analyses to determine how to, how to address those challenges and how to do it in a cost-effective way that doesn't impact building occupants. And the Bel Air Mansion has gas-fired boilers for heating, but we felt that this, I'm not sure what happened with the table there, it's blocking some of the text. But we felt that this, this was a little bit unique and that it would be an ideal location for what's called a geothermal water source heat pump system. So in comparison with an air-source heat pump system that we just presented on the previous slides, a geothermal system is drawing its heat from the ground, which has a relatively stable temperature of about 45 to 50 degrees Fahrenheit year-round. So if you think about that in comparison to the outdoor air temperature in the winter, it's a lot easier for it to draw heat from the ground. So as a result, it's going to be a lot more efficient. And we felt that that was ideal at this location because of the presence of the, the large field behind the mansion, which would allow for plenty of space to install such a system. It would produce the fewest greenhouse gas emissions compared to alternatives, requires the least maintenance, and has no HVAC equipment visible to the public. One more HVAC measure we wanted to present was called energy recovery ventilation. This would apply to the Bowie Gymnasium and Parks and Grounds office. And what this is doing is buildings where you have a constant supply of outside air and a constant draw of exhaust air, you adduct those two sources and install, what you see here, an energy recovery wheel, so that one, one stream of air, the outside air, is passing through in the opposite direction as the exhaust air. And you're, you're able to spin this wheel and then preheat or precoal the outside air, also dehumidify or humidify the air as needed. And this, running this wheel uses very little energy, so it's a good energy savings. We also presented some building envelope measures. Here's an example of one. At City Hall, we heard some comments that staff here, you know, have noticed heat due to solar heat gain coming in through windows on the south-facing side of the building. So a solution to that is this solar window film, which increases the, or I should say, it decreases the solar heat gain coefficient of the window and also would make occupants more comfortable and reduce the glare on their computer monitors. Now getting into the category for renewable energy, we have installing onsite solar photovoltaic arrays. And we identified five facilities where there is ample space and, and we feel that they would be excellent facilities for this technology. First is Bowie City Hall. So we, we looked at doing both carport arrays that cover portions of the parking lot and also a rooftop solar array. And just to see what those look like, this, these are screenshots from our model. And also, you can compare to the, the annual baseline energy consumption of this building, which is about 1,090,000 kilowatt-hours. These two systems combined would produce about 300,000 kilowatt-hours, so a little less than a third of the total energy used by the facility. Another one is the Bowie Gymnasium. This is a rooftop solar array. You can see the, the annual baseline consumption of 431,000 kilowatt-hours, and this system would produce about 320,000 kilowatt-hours. And I think there's just one more here, the Bowie Senior Center. This one, there's, there's really a lot of space, especially in the parking lot, for a, a good-sized carport array, but also some rooftop space. You can see there's already an existing solar array there, but this would propose adding some more solar. And you can see 300,000 KWH of baseline consumption, and there's, there's enough capacity to, to more than offset that. And lastly, we also looked at the fleet of city-owned vehicles and looked at some options as far as replacing them with electric vehicles when the, the vehicles reach the end of their life. So there were 175 vehicles that we analyzed for this study. You can see an example of a few of the more common vehicles that are owned by the city here and, and the proposed electric replacements. So this, this would have a potential to reduce by 938 metric tons of, of CO2 emission or 47%. We would also recommend developing and adopting a green fleet policy to guide staff in making procurement decisions. And also, as you're adding electric vehicles, you have to consider how and where to charge them. So look into installing electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and when able, seeking grant funding within some of the other proposed projects, such as the rooftop solar arrays. And that, that brings us to the end of our presentation. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, you can take that now.
At this time, I have a few questions. Councilwoman Rogers?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I was actually tracking with you, so I, I followed, I followed what you were talking about, but I have some real general questions. So I was reading that the Maryland Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022 has very ambitious goals. So based on their ambition, what percentage of those goals are we looking to implement into our 2025 plan, 25, 2025 on plan? I guess that's where it is.
Yeah, so, so again, the first, the first step is to start benchmarking the buildings. And the, the Bowie, the city of Bowie staff is already doing that. We worked with them on kind of cueing the process of how they were doing that and helped, helped get that going. So they're a little ahead of the, the curve there, so that's good. And then the first timeline, again, with regards to the BEPS to meet is 2030. So, and that's going to require some, both electrification of heating systems and some energy efficiency upgrades to meet that. The good news, as far as that, that site EUI or energy use intensity goal or, or BEP standard, those can pretty easily be met through the, through the recommendations that we've provided in the report, just the, the low cost, no hanging fruit. So, so meeting that, the site EUI target is really no problem. It's, it's that electrification or the net zero, or I should say, net direct emissions standard that both the City Hall and Ken Hill Center are, are quite far from meeting that 2030 goal right now. And where I was saying that it would, it would take some, maybe some tough decisions as far as replacing HVAC systems before the end of their life, those costs would have to be weighed against the cost of those alternative compliance fees.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you want to add something? No, you're good? Okay. So the, the other thing is, so I, I, the low-hanging fruit part is absolutely great because there's some operational things that can happen. But I think that, as I think through 2030 goals, I know that come January, there's a new administration in Washington that's not going to be as friendly to those of us that know we have to conserve energy and do things differently. So I saw capital improvements that were also a part of the strategy that may cost. And it may be, well, number one, the state of Maryland doesn't have a lot of resources. Although their goals are ambitious, they don't have a lot of resources. We know they're operating in a deficit come, this coming fiscal year. And the other thing is, the federal grants may be cut back. So what's your thoughts around how do we, you know, move forward in a deliberate way, but also in a way that is mindful of funds that may have to be expended?
Yeah, it's, it's entirely possible that the new administration could, could cut some of the, the federal funding that gets filtered down to the state level. There, there are, you know, there's, there's currently the 30% federal tax credit for, for solar. I, I wouldn't be surprised if they cancel that, if we see that go away. But also just some of the, the programs as far as the, the utilities that, that give out rebates. You know, that's, that's, that's something that's currently out there. And I know that the Bowie, the city of Bowie staff has been working with BGE to get rebates for doing these lighting upgrades, so they've been doing a great job of that. So, you know, I think taking advantage of, of what's out there, the utility rebates, there's, there's some grants that are available at the state level. But, you know, definitely, you know, some research is needed in order to see what's out there and, and be able to take advantage of as much of that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll add too, in some of the other energy efficiency studies we've been doing, one of our recommendations has been to move quickly for just that, that reason, so that you can secure the funding before any funding potential, potentially gets canceled. And there's other sources that aren't linked to the federal government, like Brian said, a lot of them are utility-based. But there's also financing programs or different types of ownership arrangements with, say, a solar photovoltaic provider, where that, you don't actually, the city would not own the photovoltaic array, the provider would own it, but they would install it on your building, and then you get the benefit of the lowered EUI at the same time that they get the benefit of collecting renewable energy credits to sell those. So there's different funding vehicles out there that don't require direct outlay of capital from the, the building owner. But that's sort of financing and cost measures we would look at if we were doing a full-blown individual building energy audit, which I think would be the next step to accelerate the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have very good answers. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions, some at the high level and some a bit more detailed. First of all, where do we stand vis-à-vis the rest of those who are obligated to follow this law?
Well, this is the first city we've done it for in Maryland, so I don't have the data set to compare it to. But what I do know is that when we do individual buildings, most of the problems come from, like, multifamily buildings. One of the downsides of the types of facilities you own is that there's only a few exemptions from the carbon, net direct carbon emissions law, which are K-12 schools and food prep services, none of which were included in the City of Bowie. I'm not sure where you would stand in relation to other municipalities, but there are definitely, like Brian went through, areas where you can make rapid and large significant improvements towards meeting the goal for, say, City Hall, or the Senior Center, or any of the other facilities that were higher on the energy consumption list. So I know on an individual basis, it's very achievable, but we would have to do that ASR A, that energy audit, in order to get actual costs attached to the energy savings. And then that's that metric, that will compare how feasible it is, given your budget and other funding sources that you might be able to explore.
So I'm, I think as most people know, I'm pretty keen on these sorts of things. However, this is a pretty aggressive timeline, and the notion that in a building of this vintage, that I would toss out perfectly good hardware, such as furnaces that are sitting up on top of my roof that are natural gas, which is a darn sight better than coal and other pollutants, that's a real concern for me. And I'm not sure what the costs are associated with that. But, you know, I got my Levitt house, and my first Levitt house, you know, the exterior air conditioner lasted like over 40 years. It was incredible. So the older equipment actually lasts longer. And I understand that it doesn't necessarily make it good or efficient, but it eliminates the cost of replacement. And I'm very concerned about trying to finance these replacement costs and throwing out what is perfectly good equipment that I'm sure will have a lifespan that's, you know, probably only halfway through its useful life before, you know, all of a sudden we're tossing it, you know, off the roof. So I am quite concerned about that. I think the operational issues are great. The one thing that does stand out to me is, you know, when I go into the men's room, I like to have hot water to wash my hands, even if it's the summertime. And the notion that just because it's over 65 degrees, that I no longer have to wash my hands in hot water doesn't seem like...
The domestic hot water systems are separate from the heating hot water systems.
Oh, I see what you're saying. All right, thank you.
We're not proposing taking away your hand washing.
All right, thank you. All right. That's good to know. But I do think that there is some significant opportunity here that you've highlighted that can make a big difference, and I'm a little surprised we weren't already, you know, taking advantage of them. So kudos to you guys on that. How close, this is a graduated process, right? So, you know, how close are we to hitting the mark on the first round? And where I'm going with this is that, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, and I'm not sure that we need to make all of the improvements on an accelerated timeline, notwithstanding your point that there may be funding available, but at the same time, as Councilwoman Rogers pointed out, that stuff may be going away, leaving us with an empty bag of money, given there's no real federal support for it.
So to use City Hall as an example here, so City Hall would have to reach a net direct emissions of 0.22 by 2030. It's currently at 2.0. So it's about roughly 10 times. It's a very aggressive goal that the state of Maryland has set.
And you mentioned that there's a penalty for failure. I'd like to remind everybody, failure is an option. If failure doesn't hurt as much as success, right, I can run a marathon and kill myself and not live to see the next day, or I could do a 5K and be a survivor. So what's the cost side? What is the, what's the sword that's hanging over my head?
Yeah, so for City Hall, so the way that the fees work is that you have that 2030 through 2034 standard, and then within those five years, it'll increase for an inflation adjustment. But just at 2030, with the status quo, it would be an annual fee of $47,216. That's our estimate. And if you were to implement the recommendations in our report, according to the timeline we gave, which is not replacing anything before the end of its lifespan, that would bring it down to about $12,986 in that first year. So those fees would rise every year, like $49,000 in 2031, $50,000 in 2032, then you get a bigger jump in 2035. Again, these are status quo numbers, not, you know, hopefully, you guys will take all of our recommendations into account, but that's essentially what you're looking at, order of magnitude.
So with that in mind, we presently have a solar array that, from which, to which we plan to add or are going to have additional capacity. How does that play in?
Unfortunately, being off-site, it does not help. So the state is looking only at site EUI. So off-site solar arrays do not help with that.
All right, does it help that we own that property? Should I move City Hall there?
Yes. It would help if you moved City Hall there, but what would help more is if we installed more solar panels here. And what we typically notice, and like Brian was showing, for, at least, that was the Senior Center, right? It was up to, it was a significant portion, up to like 30% of the total energies. When we do typical office buildings, say, in midtown DC, you don't get anywhere near those numbers. You get somewhere between 3% and 5% if you're lucky. Just because of the nature of the aspect ratio, the buildings are lower and they're wider, that gives us more surface area, which is what photovoltaics need to work. So having that off-site, and then Brian was saying, with the EUI, that's a site energy use intensity, that's what your building electric meter is seeing. So having the solar panels off-site is good for the town's overall goals, but not for the Maryland state BEPS rules and how they're going to score you.
Have there been any amendments or changes to this, to these rules so far?
There was one round, there was a proposed legislation that was put out a year prior to this, and then they got a lot of commentary back, and then they went and took some of the commentary, and now this is the revised lawsuit that came out of that process.
Well, it sounds to me that it would behoove us to get in touch with our state legislators and perhaps some of our lobbyists in some other similarly situated municipalities for, A, some general relief, and B, some specific relief with regard to the applicability of solar arrays that we have already pursued. I mean, I feel like here we are, having done yeoman's work to reduce our footprint so far, and somebody's come in and saying, oh yeah, well, all that doesn't count. We got a new set of standards, and we exclude all that you've done, and we find ourselves, you know, kind of being penalized for that. I mean, that property could have been sold, and there was expense doing that, there was opportunity costs associated with it, but we are, as a city, committed to this sort of thing. But I'm afraid that this is looking like it's a pretty onerous burden on some of these things. On others, no issues, so I think there are things we can move forward on. The heat pumps on the, I'm sorry, the geothermal, not the heat pumps, but the geothermal, we may have to take a look with that piece of property, because there may be some concerns up there with regard to the historic nature of the property. There certainly would have been outbuildings and other structures that were present that may not be visible presently on the surface, that might be adversely impacted by, you know, putting, you know, 40 boreholes to run, you know, cooling slash heating pipes. I know they'd be vertical. Well, we have some pretty open ground there, it could be horizontal as well, but I would expect we would do vertical on that. So I do have some concerns about that. The tinting, that just seems like low-hanging fruit. But I am really concerned about the cost. Any idea what a new unit up on top of this building would cost me for heating? Ballpark, I'm not going to ask you to deliver it at that price, but...
And that's one of the reasons why we recommend getting a professional cost estimator. So when we do our analysis, we're generally aware of like the ballpark. So a new rooftop unit, I would say, if it's like a 20-ton unit, probably in the range of $50,000. But given the rate of inflation over the last few years, that number changes so fast that it's hard for us to keep up with it, because when we're doing our technical analysis, we'll bring in a cost estimator to give us those kinds of prices. But even they're struggling to keep up with how much stuff costs. And oftentimes, a lot of the cost isn't necessarily just how much in dollars, but how long is it going to take? So when we're saying to secure funding ASAP, a lot of lead times we're seeing for stuff that is controlled with computer chips is now getting over a year out, maybe even a year and a half, before they can even get it here. So when you start working back from this timeline, you're going to need an energy audit, an engineer to design the thing, and a contractor to buy it and place the order to get it in. So that process by itself can take a year. And then another year, year and a half on top of that, we're getting into that timeline.
Mm-hmm. Shifting over to the electric vehicles, of which I've been a big proponent and own my, you know, love driving mind, so that's great, but at the trash truck level, these, I mean, I know our current trash trucks run about $100,000, and an electrified version, it's got to be half a million bucks, right?
Probably something in that range. But again, that's another study that you would have to do so you could understand the costs versus the benefits of reducing the fuel consumption. That's not part of the BEPS though, right? That was just part of the report that we were asked to analyze. So you're not going to be graded by the state of Maryland on your vehicle fleet. So that's a different consideration than trying to meet some timeline.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, thank you much. I very much appreciate your work on this, and I continue to be quite concerned about the fiscal issues. And, you know, we'll obviously turn to staff to try and figure out the cost benefit on some of these things, and presumably with your assistance on that, because this is a little concerning that we could try and spin it around in this kind of timeframe. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other council members, any questions? Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start off by apologizing. I always wear my engineering hat, so I, just a quick comment, your discussion about the mansion and the heat system change, or your reference to the ground always being 40 degrees, and I was reminded in thermo and fluids, Q dot equals M dot C delta T, you really can't get anything warmer than 40 degrees if that's your source. But I'd be interested to see how that system actually works. But that's not what, a question I have concerns, you have a statement in here when you talk about operational changes, where it says there should be a designated individual, ensures it all, that they are continually followed to ensure persistence of savings through future years. You're talking about the control systems for the different things. And this one in particular is the hot water, the heating systems for the gym in Bel Air Mansion. But I always think part of any new system we put in would have kind of robust control systems, to where it's programmed and it's set for automatic, and you only bring somebody in to service it when there's a problem. So you wouldn't need, in my mind, someone to be diligent over it, except for making sure that the maintenance that occurs is in line with what the design parameters are of the system. Am I missing something with that suggestion?
Well, what we meant by that is that things can always be overwritten, and sometimes it's easier to just, once again, return things to the way that things were done before, and just run the systems 24 hours a day so that it's always 72 to 74 degrees in the space, and nobody's ever going to complain. And that would be the easy way of doing things. But, you know, it's not the efficient way, it's not the cost-savings way of doing things. So our point there was just to say that, you know, we do recommend that somebody ensures that these things are followed through, and it's not just, you know, someone takes a shortcut a year or two years from now, and then all the savings that we thought we had are now lost.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I always think, though, that, my background is facility engineering in the nuclear industry, and we had robust controls over how things were, and I would think public works here would have a similar type of approach. But I will throw this story, and it's kind of cute, the place I worked at in Gaithersburg was built in 65, 67 timeframe, and back then, there was no energy issue. So they minimized the way things were designed, and the wing I was in, there was a thermostat that controlled the temperature, and one, the center office is seven. And it happened to be, for a period of two years, the occupant of that room that had the thermostat always was cold. So he brought a space heater in. So his office was extremely warm, which caused the thermostat to kick back down, and the six adjacent offices were freezing because the thermostat, the design, the design failure of the system, they got rid of it and they ended up with a control system that was separate. But to me, once we have a robust control system, and in that controlled design should be the capability to allow things to change for a short period of time, specified time, not, oh, we want the thing to be 24/7, but no, okay, we're going to have a meeting at night, normally the system's down, so you punch in a beading, and it stays effective for the cooling or heating for the duration, and then it goes back to the normal program, have a kind of default timer that drops out, so that you don't have the possibility of someone is sitting there and changing it. It should be controlled automatic like that. I'm very familiar with energy efficiency. Yes, you have a cost associated with it, but over a long period of time, you can realize the savings that pays for that upgrade that you do. I'm not aware of this analogous approach when it comes to targeting CO2 emissions and the like. I don't see how you necessarily can realize a return in your investment. It seems to me that those things that are implemented for CO2 emissions and the like are a cost that are not recoverable over a period of time. Am I missing something on that, or?
No, you're pretty accurate on that. I mean, it really depends on the cost difference between electricity versus natural gas. It can vary a lot by area. There are some areas that have cheap electricity and expensive gas, where, you know, electrification makes a lot of sense, and then other areas, it's the opposite. So yeah, you're exactly right in saying that energy efficiency typically has savings associated with it, but greenhouse gas emissions, it might, it might not.
You're right.
Yeah, I was going to add, that's part of why the state implemented that BEPS program to begin with, to put those penalties on there. When we do that more in-depth financial analysis, those penalties are a cost. So it goes into the cost column, and it gets added to it. So Maryland's hope is that this encourages the different individual buildings and municipalities to bring that down by imposing an artificial cost. to bring that down by imposing an artificial cost. So that helps get to some payback in some cases. We've done, Washington DC has a similar but functionally different kind of regulation at the same time. And we've done studies on buildings where the recommended fix is $10 million and the fine is going to be $1 million. So it really is on a case by case basis. But that's what the intent is there.
I agree with my colleague. It's frustrating. We, years ago, when I previously was on the council, 10 years ago, we looked at the array, solar array down in Indian property. And to sit there and say we don't get any credit for taking that initiative is troubling and disappointing. Are any of these initiatives directed at non-governmental entities or strictly for governments to implement? Right, does industry have to do it? Does commercials have to do it? Do homeowners have to do it?
Yeah, the Maryland BEPS regulation, it applies to all commercial, all government buildings in the state over 35,000 square feet. The only exceptions are restaurants and public, not just public, but K through 12 schools, public and private.
Yeah, you had mentioned that earlier, okay. That answers that one, that answers that one. Are there, you were recommending solar panels, arrays out like in the parking lot, what have you, but it kind of was hit or miss. Are there trade-offs if we were to put more solar panels over parking spots as far as the heat island effect? Is that considered or is it, are they two totally separate, isolated considerations?
I think there could be some small impacts on the heat island effect. Certainly anytime you're reduced, or anytime you're putting more shade over blacktop, that will help out with the heat island effect. I think the size of the arrays that we drew up here are probably a little small to have much of an impact on that. You know, we were limited by trying to avoid places that are shaded by trees. So the size of the arrays are not really that significant.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And thank you for your presentation.
I could say too, that the rooftop arrays do reduce the solar heat incoming to the building. That reduces the amount of cooling that's required at the same time. So it's got like a double effect. It's not huge, but when we're doing these energy analyses, it's, there's rarely ever a silver bullet solution that will solve all your problems. It's the accumulation of several smaller measures that all add up. And that's, that is one of them, that reduced solar incoming heat load to the roof of individual buildings where you put it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other council member? Okay, well, thank you so very much. Is there any action at this time? No motions. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other than consensus to have staff continue pursuing it? Consensus to have staff continue, yes, to continue pursuing this effort?
Okay, and that's a good point. City manager, could you continue to have staff looking into it as we develop even more data from the back?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's a good point. We intend to look at the results of the study and in the budget process that's forthcoming, incorporate what we can afford to incorporate and take it from there. And so you'll see some of these things there and those that we can afford without increasing the tax rate.
Thank you, city manager. At this time, we'll move on to item C, Economic Development Committee Recommendations on Attracting Restaurants. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Adams, Mayor Protem, Wolfley, and council members. I have joined with me Billy Lewis, who was a part of our work group. And it's quite timely that we're here since earlier we heard about Popeyes. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that one of the common themes in the survey that was conducted in 2023 was that Bowie city residents wanted high-quality restaurants, not another chicken restaurant. Well, I guess you can say they're a restaurant, but a fast food. We already have Canes, Chick-fil-A, and now apparently a Popeyes that will be in the city of Bowie. As a result of the survey, we had a work group that was formed with five members, including Billy Lewis. And some of the things that we looked at was the fact that in October of 2023, there was a panel discussion featuring retail property owners, economic development professionals, and elected officials to discuss the state of retail in the city of Bowie. Among the panelists were Larry Hints. He's the Executive Director of Business Development in Prince George's County for Economic Development Corporation. Xena Redfern of the Washington Prime Group, which is the Bowie Town Center. So the working group actually reached back out. So what I'm going to do is to go over some of the things that we found and then Billy is going to say suggestions. One common thing that was mentioned was the fact of demographics, that since Bowie is competing with surrounding areas, demographics must be compatible with other locations. They're looking for high-end restaurants. You have to have a certain high income and density. I'd like to point out as a Realtor, and I'm sorry I didn't say who I am, Yolanda Muckel. And I'm the Chair of the Bowie Economic Development. But as a Realtor, I want to note that you have Melford, Mill Branch, and South Lake. Recently, I sold a home for $725,000 that was a townhome. That particular family came from Elk Ridge. One of the things they asked me was, okay, let's celebrate. Where's a nice restaurant in our new city that we moved to, that we can go to? And they didn't think about Canes or Popeyes or Chick-fil-A. They actually wanted us to go to sit down at a restaurant. And the choices quite frankly were limited. We had to look to our north. It was like, oh, wow, we have Bonefish Grill to choose from. We have Palm House, or we can go south to Brandywine. And that's a problem. I mean, I have another client who's going to be purchasing for $696,000 in Melford, who's moving from Boston. Once again, wondering what sit-down restaurants are nearby. So when they say that they're looking for demographics, if a person can afford a $700,000 townhome and in South Lake, a $1 million single family, clearly they can afford more than fried chicken. Next would be the retail mix. Also with restaurants, they're looking at the mix of retail. What type of retail? Not just nail salons, for example, as being considered retail. They want higher-end retail. Now with existing restaurants, the performance of existing restaurants certainly will indicate to a new restaurant. If they're successful, then I can move in and be successful. But in addition to that, we should look at homegrown restaurants, not necessarily just chains, but entrepreneurs. I mean, you have, of course, Ruby's, their local grown restaurants. And I'm sure there's others as well. Density. One thing that came out of this was that daytime population, they're looking at one table turn at lunch and two table turns at dinner. And restaurants need approximately 500 diners per week to be profitable. And that's assuming that they're open six days a week. Now, of course, Chick-fil-A, they can close on Sunday, obviously, because they are very popular. As far as the economic environment, we already mentioned or heard about inflation. So clearly people are looking at their pocketbook and saying, can I afford to go out to a fine dining restaurant? But clearly, when you look around, if they can afford to go to Annapolis, Crofton, south to Brandywine, and quite frankly, even over to the Woodmore Town Center. I recently was over there celebrating my birthday. And we went to Copper Canyon and had to, thank goodness, had reservations because people were lined up out the door to go to Copper Canyon on a Thursday evening. So if they can go there, there's no reason why they can't come to Bowie. Another thing that was mentioned was permitting, that this continues to be an issue as far as the lengthy and cumbersome permitting process. In some cases, some of these architects are charging an additional 25% to 30% premium in design and consulting fees because of the length of time that it takes to get through permitting with Prince George's County versus other areas. Lastly, as far as quality improvement, if Bowie residents are driving 10, 15 miles just to find a quality restaurant, in some cases, people are driving to Virginia as opposed to staying in the city because of just not having any options. So next up, we're going to have Billy Lewis to go over the recommendations.
Thank you very much and good evening. Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm Billy Lewis. A member of the working group who looked at the restaurant issue in the city of Bowie. And I've been a resident of Bowie for 25 years and I've been hearing about this for a long time. And I'm sure our council members have also. And the complaint is that we don't have fine dining. We just, like the chairperson said, if we want to celebrate anything, we've got to go outside of Bowie. That's the bottom line and that's the concern that the residents here are expressing. And in light of that, we made several recommendations, all right? We made seven recommendations, three of which are related to the permitting process. That is a major issue that has been expressed by retailers and restaurateurs alike. And the other recommendations relate to we, within the city and restaurants within the city have to improve our game, right? The better service, better quality, that's what we're looking for. So the recommendations are as follows. For those of us who want to improve our restaurants, our services, well, we need to improve the workforce. We need to improve the quality of service that's provided to the residents here, all right? So how do we do that? And the recommendation really is to connect these existing restaurants to resources and organizations that could help, such as the Emplored Prince George's County. That is a program that could improve the quality of service that we get and the workforce itself, all right? Customer service is very important and I think the residents are looking for that. The second one is the fostering an environment whereby instead of the residents here going to, like the chairperson was saying, going up north to Annapolis or War Chapel. And if we were to promote the restaurants that we do have within the city of Bowie, that would be great. So foster an environment that encourages residents to support existing restaurants. And how do we do that? There's a variety of tools that we could use. One of them is promoting it through Restaurant Week. There's a variety of ways of promoting different restaurants that we have here. So that's the second recommendation. The third recommendation is creating a list and maintaining a list of second generational, generation restaurant spaces, right? So if you want to open up a new restaurant, hey, an existing restaurant was already there. So if we have a list that we could maintain and provide that as a tool to assist the restaurateurs who wants to come within the city, that would be great. That would be an expense that they won't have to incur, incur, all right? The other one is to advocate for zoning changes, like the chairperson was talking about. You know, density is a big deal, rooftop. And that's something that we've learned that organizations look for, right? They're looking for density. They want to make sure that they make money when they come into the city. And one of the things that we're asking is that you look at the, advocate for zoning. Zoning is a big deal. That would support, the zoning would support residential development. And that way, that would increase our density. And at different locations, this location, you know, around Bowie Town Center would be a perfect one, right? So zoning is key. So if we could advocate for that, I know that's a tough road ahead, but that's a recommendation, all right? So the other thing that we talked about really relates to the permitting process. And I know there's a role, the city, the city of Bowie already has a person and a role that assists, who assists the different retailers in the permitting process. And we're asking that, well, if we need to increase support for that branch within the city of Bowie, that would be great because it's, if we have that role, that responsibility could be enhanced because a lot of retailers are complaining that they have issues navigating the permitting process that is managed by the county, right? And the way we see it is we could be like a liaison to help and walk these people through the permitting process. So that's one item. The other thing is the permitting process, since it's not, it's not unique to the city of Bowie. Other cities within the Prince George's County and other organizations have the same issue. So if we could collaborate with them and touch base with them and come up with some kind of solution with different municipalities and industry group, we could address those challenges, right? So the recommendation really is to, for us within the city to foster an alignment with those different organizations and see if we could develop partnership with them to help improve the permitting process. So that's number two for the permitting process. The lastly, we're requesting that, well, we're asking that the city request an ombudsman at the county level, right, to assist with the permit inspection and enforcement issue that people are having. So it's a way of coordinating the permitting process through the ombudsman, through having coalition with different organizations, and to elevate our support within the city to alleviate the issue with permits, all right? That's something, those are the items that we recommend. Thank you very much.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Lewis. Does anyone have any questions about anything? Yes.
Any questions, anyone? Counsel, Councilwoman Emma DeWamann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation this evening. It's good to see you both. My first question is for staff. During the last budget cycle, we talked about this role of an ombudsman quite a bit. And then we also possibly talked about seeing what County Councilwoman Harrison's office, as well as Deepi, was prepared to do in supporting us to have this more like white touch or white label service for the city of Bowie. What did we end up doing with that? Like, where did that land?
We have our internal permit specialist, which is Tiara Andrews. She's our business retention specialist. Part of retaining businesses in Bowie has become very much helping them get through the permit process, as been mentioned. We have a pretty good relationship with Charles Cooper. Charles Cooper is the senior person at Deepi responsible for permit bird dogging. He is by default right now the ombudsman for anyone who has an issue getting their permit. So we're working that in the current year. And we're examining what can be included in the budget proposal that will be winding its way through the council's process beginning in January to address whether or not we seek a permit. in January to address whether or not we seek a permit specialist, with that being the full duty, not just additional duties, or whether we want to pursue contracting with one of several firms that can be hired to do that. So we haven't ignored it, we're doing it as we can with current resources, and we're looking to increase the resources we've got.
Thank you so much for that, John Henry. I think for this next budget cycle that we're coming up again, what I would love to get a clear understanding for staff during the economic development section will be, since we had this conversation about an ombudsman-like figure or potentially hiring somebody or looking at what it would take to have somebody specifically dedicated to permitting for the city of Bowie for any type of activity that we may want, for like a restaurant or things of that sort, I'd like to understand what that report was and what was the conclusion from that? Because we did talk about this extensively during the last budget cycle, so much so that the recommendation from staff, if I remember correctly, and I can go back and watch the hearing, was, hey, we'll think about this, we'll talk about this, we'll do our own research internally and see if there's a need for this in the next upcoming budget cycle. So I'd want to get a report out to really understand, was there a need? Do you identify a need? Is this something that we want to move forward with? How is it, is there an opportunity cost associated with us not having this role, given that this is the second time that it's coming up in the council hearing? So that's what I'd love to understand going into the next budget cycle.
While there won't be a formal report, because we've identified that there is an issue, and we've applied staff resources to addressing it as we can now, we will be prepared to discuss that with you during the budget process.
Okay, 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 that'll be helpful.
In the context of what we're going to be asking you to fund.
Okay, sounds good. That's good. And then, because I remember, you had similar recommendations of this about a year ago. And then with those recommendations, I took two of them and presented them to this body. One was the ombudsman role, and then the second one was seeing if we could set aside marketing dollars to attract restaurants to come to the city of Bowie. Now, I know that we currently have an RFP out. John Henry, can you give us the status on the RFP and where that is?
We received four responses at our deadline, November 22nd. Those responses are currently undergoing review by a review team. We'll have more details later this month.
Thank you so much for that, John Henry. So two of those recommendations that you've already kind of put towards are under motion, and I look forward to looking over these responses and seeing what these companies are prepared to do. I think, and I just, when I spoke, I saw Chesley, I spoke to him just very briefly. And I think for this body, when it comes to restaurateurs, it's a really touchy spot for me, mainly because a lot of these restaurants that a lot of our constituents want to see only go to places that are surrounded by condos and apartments, because that's what sustains their foot traffic every single day. Like, these apartment buildings, they're going downstairs, they eat dinner at these restaurants during happy hour, and they sustain them financially. And unfortunately, that's just not the pattern of our constituency. Our constituency doesn't go out to eat every single night. Quite frankly, they maybe even go out to eat once every two weeks. And a lot of these restaurateurs will not take a gamble or take the risk and go in an area if they know they're not going to have sustained foot traffic. I don't know what that means for us going forward into this next budget cycle and how we want to look at our strategic planning, and what does that mean? Because at some point, we're going to have to make a decision as a constituency, not just up to this bottle, body, but for our constituents, because on the one hand, they don't want more apartments, but they want more restaurants, but these restaurants only come to things that are under apartments. It's like the Whole Foods argument. Everybody wants Whole Foods, but Whole Foods only wants to go underneath apartments, and nobody wants the apartments that Whole Foods wants. And so it's a very touchy spot for us. I think, for me, and on behalf of District Four, I think the best thing that we can do is see if we can focus on attracting specialty restaurant groups that are willing to take the gamble. A good example of one is Atlas. Atlas is currently expanding all up and down, from Baltimore down to Prince George's County to Virginia, and really approaching them and like these really specialty niche owners that are willing to take the gamble, that had the financing in place, and just really do a white glove matching of, you are expanding, here is this area, does it make sense, and what does that look like? And really playing a lot more of an intentional role in that matchmaking process. I think that's probably what our focus should be going forward, but I know that's going to be up to discussion for the rest of this body. It's a very touchy subject. I don't even really know what the direct answers are for it, but I know that a lot of us are considering it. So I really thank you for your recommendations, and I'm glad to know that two of them are at least underway.
Well, thank you for that. When I think of Wall Chapel, though, where are the apartments there? I mean, really? You have the older homes, townhomes, they are building, well, there's some townhouses, but they don't have apartments.
That's not accurate. There are hundreds of apartments.
Big apartments?
Large, there's a large apartment complex right next to the theater.
Okay.
It's just 200 apartments.
That's true.
Yeah.
And I would even, just on that, just if I may, Mr. Mayor, briefly, even on Wall Chapel's, even the restaurants there are not the restaurants that the city of Bowie wants. Like, if you look at the Wall Chapel mix-up, there's Silver Diner. I mean, yes, they launched a luxury, higher-tier restaurant, but Silver Diner, technically, if we were to say to District Four, I'm bringing Silver Diner, would anybody jump up and down? Probably not.
I think people are looking at the fact that Bonefish Grill is there.
Yeah.
And Brandywine Bonefish Grill is there. And then the new farmhouse, that's been, that location's been several things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for the presentation. I had the pleasure of sitting in while you were discussing this and have had a better understanding of what you were saying tonight. But two things I want to bring up, so I totally agree 100% with Councilwoman Roxy, I don't mess up her last name, I just call her by her first name. And the point is that you do need the rooftops to drive the traffic in order to get the people to come in. I mean, you just do. It's just a basic philosophy around commercial businesses such as grocery stores as well as restaurants. The other piece, I'll say, is about Deep Eye. We had less talk a couple weeks ago at a council meeting, and I had given him some input, and I think I talked to this group as well, that Bowie can't do this by itself when it comes to permitting. And so we're, hopefully, we'll have a municipal league meeting here in the city, and that will give us an opportunity to put that on the agenda. So I know that we're not the only municipality that's having problems with Deep Eye. And I'm almost positive that getting our own zoning authority will be a challenge, although I am always hopeful that we'll be able to do so. But I think if we come together as a collective body, as the administration is changing on the county level, we may be able to get in, get a foothold in, have someone talk to us, because we learned during that presentation that you all had is that the process is broken. They have a system in place that was supposed to make it more efficient, and it has not. It has made it probably somewhat worse, because you can't just go knock on someone's door and say, please help me get this permit, walk through, because of their processing thing. So with all that being said, my one question to you, you both, is if you had to recommend one thing from your list, what would be your number one priority that you would want the city to focus on?
Do you have? Do you have one?
Well, like I said, three of our seven recommendations is related to Deep Eye. All right, so anything that we could do in the city of Bowie to alleviate whatever issues that they're having, and I'm talking about the retailers and the restaurateurs, that would be number one, I think, because three out of the seven are related to Deep Eye.
I would also agree with that, because if retailers, as well as restaurants, are charging additional money because they're saying it's difficult to get through the process, that's basically saying to some retailers, well, I'd rather just not go there or restaurants, if it's going to cost more money.
Right, right, right. So one other thing that sounded like a low-hanging fruit for me was Restaurant Week. And I thought that was a good idea, because we do have some restaurants, and it might be a good idea just to focus and showcase around the local culinary, you know, opportunities that we do have. Bowie BIC had an event here a couple weeks ago, last week, and they had a taste of Bowie. And they had people walking around sampling. And I did find a new place, it's not a sit-down, eat-in sort of the place, but it was a new place I could go to and get dinner on Friday night. So I think that's a low-hanging fruit, and if I were this committee, those would probably be my top two. The one that's more critical, Deep Eye, and the other is bringing more attention to what we already have here in the city of Bowie. So that's my comments. Thank you, you've done a great job, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Yolanda, for your presentation. The EDC, John King, I had a chance to sit on the committee prior to council a while ago, and as a business owner, I understand the risks and the rewards, the rooftops, what is attracting the people. One of the key issues, and I really appreciate these seven points, I mean, they are, they are accurate, clear. One of the things in terms of, I think, is important to retain, you mentioned Ruby's Restaurant. That's probably the only restaurant that we have that's homegrown. We don't have many second generational restaurants. When I first moved here, there was a restaurant in the Bowie Town Center called Strawberries. It was, it was called Strawberry...
Strawberry Bistro.
Strawberry Bistro. Yep, we're five guys here now.
I remember that.
Beautiful, beautiful restaurant, sit-in dining, music, great food. In terms of supporting these restaurants, we have a Carrabas that's adjacent right beside apartment buildings in Longleaf off Governor Bridge Road. They are facing challenges in terms of staying viable. And, you know, our, we have Applebee's, we have different restaurants that after their 30 years leases, they're, they had, I mean, as business, you know, as business owners, you know, they have a right to, you know, weigh their odds, right? But at the same time, you know, everybody that is living in these $700,000 houses, you know, from time to time, you do want a fast food restaurant, you do want a cheeseburger, you know, or something of that sort. So Ray Kroc, you know, he did what he did in terms of doing something opposite. So I think I'm for a smart development, and we need, we definitely need more high-end restaurants, just not in Bowie City, that is a county, you know, cry-out. And so, you know, because we are the greatest city in this county, we speak that as well. You know, so I'm definitely in support, you know, smart development and retail, you know, no matter, no matter how much customer service I give as an entrepreneur, I used to call my business a small business, now I call it a growing business, because after, you know, you've been in business and you, people support you, you're able to grow. And that's what we need more to sustain small business so they can grow. And let a lot of residents get their hands in the game, let's take the risk. We don't have, we don't, we can start other restaurants, like, what's the restaurant you named, Copper Canyon?
Copper Canyon.
Yeah, 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 that's a county, that's a county and base restaurant. And it's doing, it's doing well. I definitely love these points that you guys gave, and I echo my colleague in how we can collaborate and move forward is definitely, is definitely worth, you know, worth the effort. So thank you again.
Thank you so much. I know we could go on for hours more on this discussion, but we need to move on with the agenda. One more question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for being here this evening. I do think there are a couple of comments. The first thing is, no doubt that Deep Eye is an issue. However, to a certain degree, we're barking up the wrong tree, because we don't have that authority, but I do think that we would, you know, it's incumbent upon the community at large, by that I mean the business community at large, to be advocating and lobbying for itself at the county level, with us by your side. Because I do think there needs to be a change, a sea change in the way that business is handled. I just hear it all over the place, and it affects us as a community, it affects the business owners, and it's really detrimental to everybody. So I would say that what would, you know, and think about how it is that we can advocate collectively at the county, in essence, I guess what I'm saying is, now that you've reported out here, don't consider the job done. I think we've got to go to the next place, which is to the county, working with our councilwoman to help advance this. And she recognizes that this is a problem, this is not something foreign to her. So thank you for your insights on that. And the other thing is Restaurant Week. Washington has a, you know, a restaurant, Washington Metropolitan Restaurant Association, something like that. I think what we need is a group similar, maybe it's a subset of, I don't know of what group it would be, but there needs to be a group that coalesces around there. And off the top of my head, I was just thinking, geez, who would be good to put in for such a Restaurant Week? We don't have a lot of people to, or a lot of restaurants that don't fall into that quick-serve category, but you know, you've got Jerry's Seafood, Smokey Bones, Golden Pavilion, that's, you know, some good food there, Ruby's, Black Cow, Carrabas. Getting that core group together to establish that central focus that we can establish a Restaurant Week, so that they can decide when they want to do it, what's the best time of the year, should it be the same time as Washington, or should it be different? And then I think the city should be in a position to help with that as well. But I do think it's incumbent upon the restaurant community to get together and be a part of that solution, because there are not many of them that it would fall into the category of someone, someone's like, oh, it's Restaurant Week, let's go to Popeyes and see what they got, all right? It's the same coupon that you get any other place. So I would, I would say that if we could, you know, go to start working that next step, that'd be awesome. Thank you all very much for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so very much. Hey, we really are going very long. Go ahead, Councilwoman, and to remind you, but we have to move on.
I was going to say, if you guys are actively reaching out to people, two groups that I would reach out to are Atlas Group. Atlas is based in Baltimore, and they're actively expanding. They're called Atlas Restaurant Group. And then the other one is a restaurant called Amora. It's owned by a husband and wife. They're building a second restaurant in Tyson's Corner now. We've poached them for Prince George's County, so those are the two that you could reach out to.
So where is Amora?
Amora's in Baltimore right now, Ritz Carlton residences, but if you Google Amora, you'll see the owner's information there.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Real quickly, at the last EDC committee meeting, we had a gentleman from Deep Eye there talk about and acknowledge the issues with the permitting process and what they're doing to try and rectify that. So at least they're acknowledging the problem, and hopefully something will come to pass on that. But I can tell you, going back 22 years now, Bowie's had a problem with getting things to come in. For a while, we spent a lot of money, this will be the third, or maybe the fourth, hiring of a PR firm for business. And it's, for the most part, it's been money wasted, because I don't think we have a vision of what we want yet. So I think... So I think we need to find that. What is economic development? Because right now, what I'm seeing is there's a competition between institutional aspect of the city, commercial aspect, and restaurant. Which one do we want to help? One over the others or all of them at the same time? So I think we up here need to resolve that issue. And I'm hoping we can do that here soon. And my vision is that it'll end up with an economic development corporation for the city of Bowie so we can come up with incentives to get people coming in. I can tell you, my wife went to Bonefish, came back and raved about it. So I reached out three times to their corporate headquarters. And they said at the time, oh, we don't co-locate a Bonefish with Outback. We don't do that.
Okay.
And then guess what? Go up to Royal Chapel. It was in 500 feet. That's where they... So, you know, either things changed or they were lying. I don't know. But the problem is that we've had difficulty. And for a while, we did have, I think 16 restaurants came in previously while I was in the council. But then COVID hit and we lost TGI Fridays, Ruby Tuesdays, Tia's, and several others. So there was the pendulum of the economic swing kicked in there. But I do think we need to, one, continue the pressure. And PG-CMA is a good example because at the last meeting, there was another representative from Park and Planning's section talking about the problems with permitting. So they're aware of it. And the members of the other municipalities of PG-CMA were complaining about the same thing that we've complained about. So there is, I think we can benefit if we coordinate and work together. But just because we solved that, I'm not certain, without a real good vision of what it is we want, will it necessarily help? So I would hope that we would be able to deal with that. And I've got several other things I won't go into. But I commend you for your effort. I think several, if not all of them, are good points, but maybe not implemented the way you're suggesting. But if we accomplish the same thing by doing it a different way, I'm sure you won't complain over that as long as we are able to improve and move along. But I want to commend you for that and thank you for that and look forward to the next EDC meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Stev, I was told that I missed your hand. So please feel free to go right ahead.
We got to move along. Thank you, though. Thank you, Yolanda. Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, thank you so very much for being here this evening. We'll now move on to adoption of resolution R-82-24.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm George Jones, Grants Manager. And I'm here tonight to present to you the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2023. This report is for year number five of our five-year approved plan, which is acquired by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Program. The report identifies our expenditures and program accomplishments for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Throughout the fiscal year, the Office of Grant Development and Administration performed grants administration activities that included grant research, writing, grants management, and review of rules and regulations, along with policy and procedure training. The Grants Office has assisted in housing and community development activities, such as homebuyer assistance, workforce training, and development, homeowner displacement, fair housing administration, housing rehabilitation, and work with our community partners on various other initiatives like response to homeless services and related assistance depending on residents' needs. For fiscal year 2023, the HUD's CDBG grant funding was $188,403. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or sometimes called CAPER, outlines all the statutory requirements that were achieved and the program activities that have taken place during that fiscal year. For fiscal year 2023, these programs were, one, the Single Family Rehab Program. This program is for low mod-income homeowners. We approved 13 applicants that were awarded grants of $10,000 each. During that year, we completed 11 projects. In addition, there was fair housing training. During Fair Housing Month on Wednesday, April 26, the city hosted an online presentation on fair housing laws, rights, and organizations that can assist with fair housing violations. The program featured three subject matter experts who worked in the fair housing space regionally. They included Imani Cherry Esquire and Autumn Clark Esquire of the Reelman Colfax Law Firm, who presented on the law and history of fair housing legislation, while Hillary S. Chapman of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments presented on the regional analysis of impediments to fair housing. We also did workforce training. The program provided training to 26 residents between the ages of 15 to 25 years old. Training topics included life skills curriculum, STEM industry topics, and STEM industry topics. Having satisfactorily completed the requirements, inclusive of public hearings, advertising, community outreach, we ask that you approve Resolution R-82-24, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2023, so it can be submitted to HUD for their review and approval. That's it.
Are there any questions, councilmembers? Okay. Do you have one? I know what Eston was about to do now.
Okay.
No, no, no. I was getting to my cheat sheet. All right. I will declare the public hearing open at this time. Do we have anyone?
No, Mayor. No one signed up this evening and no comments were received via email.
At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval for adoption of Resolution R-82-24, as well as adoption of Resolution R-83-24. Nope, excuse me.
They have to be two separate public hearings.
All right, then. In that case, I will withdraw the second part and just make an adoption of Resolution R-82-24.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. R-83-24.
Now, Mayor and councilmembers, I would like to present to you the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2024. This report is for year one of our five-year approved plan, which is required by HUD and the Community Development Block Grant Program. The report identifies our expenditures, program accomplishments for fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. The designated CDBG project areas for 2024 cover single-family housing rehab, fair housing training, workforce development training, emergency food assistance and emergency food assistance. CDBG-funded activities for these projects meet the national objective of providing benefits to low and moderate income persons. The Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024 identifies specific goals and objectives to meet local priority needs during that fiscal year. As in previous years, the Grants Office assisted in housing and community development activities such as homebuyer assistance, workforce training and development, homeowner displacement, fair housing administration, housing rehabilitation, and work with our community partners on various other initiatives like the response to homeless services and related assistance depending on residents' needs. For fiscal year 2024, the HUD's CDBG grant funding was twofold. HUD's CDBG entitlement program was funded at $177,913. And we also received the CARES Act supplemental funding in the amount of $63,204. The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report outlines all the statutory requirements that were achieved and the program activities that have taken place during the fiscal year. For fiscal year 2024, these programs were: the Single Family Rehab Program. The program is for low mod-income homeowners. 15 applicants were awarded grants of $10,000 each. 15 rehab projects were completed. Fair Housing Training. During Fair Housing Month on Wednesday, April 24, 2024, the city hosted an in-person fair housing event on fair housing laws, rights, and organizations that can assist with fair housing violations, with a focus on the regional history of fair housing and the current state of housing in Prince George's County. The 2024 presentation was conducted by Manuel Ochoa of the Ochoa Urban Collective. In addition, we also had a workforce development program. The program provided training to 24 residents between the ages of 15 to 25 years old. Training topics included life skills curriculum, STEM, innovation and entrepreneurship, with a focus on emerging industries and technologies. And finally, there was emergency housing assistance. The Office of Grants Administration also assisted residents affected by the Wooden Lake condominium fire with shelter and emergency needs through funding provided by the HUD CARES Act appropriation, approximately $4,000. Having satisfactorily completed the requirements, inclusive of public hearings, advertising, and community outreach, we ask that you approve Resolution R-83-24, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2024, so it can be submitted to HUD for their review and approval.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? At this time, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Do we have any speaking?
No, Mayor. No one signed up this evening and no comments were submitted via email.
I didn't hear that. Nobody?
Nope. No, nobody signed up and no comments were received via email.
Thank you. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for adoption of Resolution R-83-24, adopting the Housing and Community Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for fiscal year 2024.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries. At this time, let's move to item E of the Introduction of Ordinance 0125, Repeating in its entirety and reenacting with amendments.
Mayor, that was moved to the January 6 meeting.
Did you want to discuss? I thought you asked you wanted to discuss that today.
No.
Not until the 6th?
Not the rest of this is...
Huh?
You're talking about PG-CMA?
No.
I'm talking about item... I thought you said you wanted to discuss this today and not wait until January 6.
No.
January 6 is fine.
What I asked to have a discussion about tasking staff with reviewing the church's application had nothing to do with that.
Okay. All right. Moving right along to council discussion on hosting a Prince George's County Municipal Association PG-CMA meeting. This is one I brought on. And let me just kind of cut to the chase on that. What I'd like to ask of council is that before we commit any resources of the city or anything else as a professional courtesy, would you please check with me and talk with me on this? Because I had talked with them about doing it and wanting to do it a little later in the spring. But what we need to do is understand that we can't commit the resources of the city without us first having some discussion and input to it. Okay? And that's that. That's all. All right. Any other items? Any other questions? Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, at some point, are we going to commit to a date in the spring? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So we'll come back to this and have a date?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for the clarity.
Any other questions? Go ahead, please. Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you. Prior, I believe it was, I'm sorry. After the September PG-CMA meeting, I relayed to all that they had asked for a municipality to volunteer January, February, March. And I asked for input. No one responded. Prior to the meeting, just a week or two ago, I asked, is everybody comfortable with the January, February, March date? And I got no response from anybody. They were asking and I said we would do the January one because I figured you guys already knew about this and knew it was coming. And it's not a large capital expenditure. So if we're not going to do the January, we need to let that out.
Yes, and we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
We have one more subject on the agenda.
The item that I added about Redeemer Christian Church.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just in light of the fact that we have a letter from the applicant's attorney that talked about, shoot, sorry about that. They ask that the November meeting at Park and Planning be delayed till at least December 5. So the last date we have is December 5, which is this Thursday. What I would ask for council support is to task Planning Department, Joe Minor, with reaching out to Park and Planning and see if we can push their next hearing on the Redeemer Christian Church application to January or February. And if they are able to do it, then I would ask that staff prepare a report and schedule a hearing before us on this so we can take a position on their proposal. Because if it moves ahead and they grant the six houses to be on extended due drive, we need to make sure that the quantity and the quality is at least commensurate, if not equal, to what exists there. We need to make sure that buffering is adequate. We also need to have discussions about whether to annex or not because, believe me, in five, 10 years from now, the residents, if it is built, the residents of those six houses are going to start complaining about the fact that the city of Bowie is not picking up their trash or cleaning their streets. So I think we need to have a meeting, let the public speak, take a position, a formal position, if they don't have, conduct the hearing on the 5th. So that is what my request is for consensus. Sorry, to assign the task to Planning Department.
City manager, can we get that together for the council?
Well, I think based on what Mr. Brady said, the first thing we need to do is try to get that December 5 hearing pushed out. And if not, then there's a moot point, I think. So we will, we got that mission unless somebody's got any objections to it. And we can start pressing that. I'm not sure how much success we're going to have. We can certainly try. That will be telephonic communications with the persons in... That will be telephonic communications with the persons in charge and expressing a desire to push the, the hearing out till January, February and see what their response is. We can do that if, if so directly.
Hey, thank you, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
I'm sorry, I didn't open the floor. I'd like to open the floor to most.
Here, helping you speed things along. Throwing up roadblocks.
It's been moved.
There we go.
It's been moved and probably seconded. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries.